Please take our seats. All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Chaplain James Michael Mayfield from the Clayton County Police Department. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to ask Mr. Carlton Holloway to lead us in the pledge. Please stand with me.
Let's bow our heads, please. Our Father in Heaven is we gather tonight to take care of the business of this county for 2019 and coming months. We pray first of all for your presence, that you might be in the midst of everything said and done. Pray that you be glorified through everything that's done for the county and voted on. And pray, Father, that you would help everything to be said in a manner that would be pleasing to you. And we'll praise you for what you do, in Jesus' name, amen.
It's Mr. Holloway here. Please, sir. Be honored for you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, he's the Veteran of the Month, that's why we're... Everybody's like, "Why ain't he get to do it?" We work it out. All right, sir.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any members of the Board want to offer any amendments?
Any Board members want to offer any amendments, relations?
Oh, to go ahead. I want to pull item D off of the considered agenda for discussion.
So you want to put it on the regular agenda?
Well, put it on, no, no, just pull it off.
Pull it off?
Correct.
Okay. So, item D is Recommendation for the Fifth Contract Amendment, RFP sixteen dash four-two Enterprise Resource Planning System for Clayton County, Georgia. The motion is to pull it off the agenda, is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye. Oppose, is she unanimous? Are there any others?
Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Is there a motion?
One second, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, I apologize. On the minutes from the last meeting, there was an item where it involved item B in the minutes. And it's my understanding that based upon the Roberts Rule of Order, that we can reconsider any item that was previously voted on if we were on the side that helped pass the amendment. And that's item B where it involves the Kronos Inc., once again Tyler Technologies. How do we...
So...
How do we approach it?
Mr. Hancock.
Technically, Madam Commissioner, you can't reconsider it, but you can make a motion to rescind, whether you voted for or against. Reconsideration can only be done during the meeting that it occurs. That's a little different than Roberts Rules, but that comes from our, what our ordinance provides. And I don't have the code section right off the top. But, but it provides that a reconsideration can only be done in the meeting that it, that the action took place. However, you can at the subsequent meeting, make a motion to rescind, whether you voted for it or against it.
But that would just be for her, her vote?
That's right, yes. So, that... Then you can discuss it from that point.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, now remember, there was a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda with, is that amendments?
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, is she unanimous?
Number four is an acknowledgment of the Clayton County Veteran of the Month.
I'm going to ask Mr. Holloway to come forward again, and the Board members to go down for a presentation. And as you are going down, Commissioners, I will read. Mr. Carlton Holloway retired in two thousand four as a Master Sergeant. He served in the United States Army for thirty years. Mr. Holloway has continued his service in Clayton County as a Correctional Officer for the Clayton County Sheriff's Department, fitness trainer at South Clayton Recreation Center, Operations Manager for North Bridge Estates Home Association, and a vital member of, at Kinship Grandparents-Raising Grandchildren Center. You can learn more about Mr. Carlton's military accolades and background on the Clayton County website under the Veteran of the Month program. Please help me welcome him. And let me just thank, uh, reach this right quick. The plaque says Clayton County Veteran of the Month. With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor Carlton Holloway, U.S. Army. Go to your round. Sergeant Major.
I was trying to get you, we were getting the Holloway.
Oh, my, I'm sorry.
They're in the best community, what can we say? But, but I would get you this time.
All right. All right, Chief Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Before I get into tonight's presentation, let me start by, as I, as I try to do every time I speak, thank the four hundred and six dedicated men and women of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services for whom make everything that my organization does for this community possible. Before I get into tonight's presentation, I want to make a couple of brief announcements on major programs that the department will be working on in two thousand and nineteen. First is a formal announcement that the landmark collaboration between CCFES and the Clayton County Board of Education has been selected for presentation at this year's Fire Rescue International Conference to be held in Atlanta at the Georgia World Congress Center this August. Fire Rescue International, which is hosted by the International Association of Fire Chiefs, is the largest fire service conference and expo in the world. Over a four-day period, tens of thousands of fire service and community leaders from around the globe will descend on Atlanta for intensive training on topics that are at the forefront of today's industry leaders and fire service executive officers. By virtue of its acceptance and out of the hundreds of submissions, Clayton County Fire and EMS Pathway Program has been recognized by the I Chiefs as an international best practice in the area of workforce development. Our presentation entitled "It Takes a Village: Meeting the Challenges of Hiring Through Innovations in Workforce Development" will take our attendees through the process of how to shape the future success of their department by investing in the lives of their youth today. So that is announcement number one. Next, I'm proud to announce to the Board that CCFES has been awarded a substantial grant through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in collaboration with the Georgia Department of Public Health. The four-year, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant is to design, test, and evaluate novel approaches to address a set of evidence-based strategies aimed at reducing risk, complications, and barriers to prevention and control of diabetes, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease among high-burdened populations. CCFES is already one of the lead agencies in the CDC's Paul Coverdale Stroke Registry Program, which studies the pre-hospital treatment of stroke patients. This study will take that level of care one step higher and provide the citizens of Clayton County who suffer a stroke with unparalleled post-discharge care, helping to reduce or eliminate any long-term deficits while improving their overall quality of life. This grant will help further solidify our place as the standard for pre- and now post-hospital stroke care in the country. And as you can see, we are one of only two agencies in the country that will receive funding to conduct post-discharge stroke research to include a tele-psych component in which we will address the psychological effects of having a stroke and the realizations of a new post-stroke life. This is a four-year grant which will include a partnership with the Centers for Disease Control, the Georgia Department of Public Health, CCFES, and Southern Regional Medical Center. And we will focus on Clayton County's top three co-morbidities, which are diabetes, hypertension, and congestive heart failure, all which are primary indicators and causes for stroke. So I'm very proud of my organization for the work that they provide to this community, and this is certainly a direct result of their effort. So thank you for your support in those endeavors as well. Finally, I'm excited to introduce our latest tool in disaster communications, which is called Code Red. Code Red is a result of months of collaboration with the COO's office and a charge to analyze various aspects of our crisis communication strategies, coupled with the need to provide real-time external and internal event notifications, and then provide a single platform capable of meeting the needs of today and the challenges of tomorrow. That solution is termed Code Red. Here is a brief video that will explain the basics of its operation.
When seconds count, there is a difference, and it makes a difference. Code Red, a high-speed emergency notification solution designed to notify millions of people in minutes. The Code Red system is used by clients all across the United States, Canada, and the Caribbean to inform communities of missing children, evacuations, hurricanes, wildfires, and severe weather. Code Red is also used to initiate and dispatch teams of first responders. When a life-threatening event impacts a community, a Code Red notification can be launched in just a few easy steps. Authorized system users log into the secure Code Red system, and then select exactly who should receive the message. An entire city or state can be selected, specific groups, or the system allows geographic notifications using easy targeting tools. Then, the message is created. As soon as the message is launched, citizens are immediately notified by phone calls, text messages, emails, social media messages, and through the Code Red mobile alert app. The app provides geospecific messages to only those subscribers in the exact area of impact. So visitors to the area, as well as citizens, can receive messages directly on their smartphones. Code Red, alert, inform, affect lives.
So, that's kind of the front-facing to the citizens and to the public. One of the things that we've added to this is our FEMA i-Pause integration, which what that allows us to do is the system, as we have it now, for all of our county-level subscribers, and there's, we'll get into how the information is disseminated, we'll get these, these internal informations or when we, when we send out these crisis notifications. In the event we have something that affects the region, we can actually send an alert through FEMA, outline the borders of Clayton County, and anybody with a cellphone that enters that geographic boundary will get that alert, regardless whether they're a subscriber to our system or not. It's very similar to the system used in Hawaii when they announced the missed bomb alert. But we have checks in, in place to make sure that does not happen here.
You could have left that part out.
But it's very, that was an i-Pause alert, so we do have that integration. As it said, we can select groups and receive and respond to internal. Messages may include evacuation notices, missing persons, inclement weather, and more. And then we create custom zones. All of this is governed by the Public Warning Annex of the Clayton County Emergency Operations Plan, which we brought forth back in the spring for approval by the Board. So what happens when you get an alert? When an alert goes off, listen carefully to the message, as it may provide information on actions to take. Information may include evacuation route, shelter in place and structure, or shelter locations. Citizens will only receive pertinent information that is related to their safety. This will not be used to send out daily informations on things that are happening in the county. This is only in times of, when the county declares an emergency, when the Clayton County Emergency Operations Plan is put into place, that's when the system will be used, so folk do not come desensitized to the messages that comes from Code Red. And then, of course, during a large-scale emergency or disaster, that information may possibly save your life. So how do they get it? The registration link is available on ccfes.org. Next month, we will be sending out an insert into the Clayton County Water Authority water bills. So everybody in the county that gets a water bill will get an insert that's in English and Spanish to tell you how to download it. Registration is absolutely free, and you can register your home and your cellphone numbers to ensure alerts are received. And the app itself is available on both the Apple App Store and Google Play. So with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
All right, any questions from Board members for Chief Marcus?
I just want to say it's great, I'm so glad to see this. But I also want to see if there's a way that we can push out, sign up maybe at a place that a lot of people come, and we could talk about that offline, because I don't know the legalities of it. But for instance, if you purchase a business license, there's a box that says, "Check this box to sign up for emergency alerts." Or when you pay your property tax, "Check this box for emergency alerts." So that way, we're sure to catch as many people as possible without waiting for them to go there to sign up.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, good job, Chief, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board will next hear a presentation on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Benefits Administration Strategy as presented by Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this evening. The purpose of this presentation is to present the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Benefits Administration Strategies in an effort to gain the Board's support to pursue these strategies. At this time, no request to finalize or fund any initiatives, we're not at that particular point yet. Benefits Administration, we have three areas of focus, three focus areas. These areas was developed based on our employee feedback. Our employees spoke, and we listened, and they identified the three focus areas as their most concerns: cost, communication, and options. As a result of these focus areas, we were able to put new strategies in place this particular planned year. And, and the fight continues to be as innovative as we possibly can. Every thing that we do in Benefits Administration is focused on these three focus areas. Strategy one is the implementation on an on-site wellness center. I have given the Board a preliminary, high-level executive summary of what that particular center would look like. Please note that that is just preliminary. The consultants and my team, we are still working on the details, redefining this particular strategy. The, what we're trying to do is to provide the employees with a lower-cost option. Strategically designed and effectively operated wellness centers. Research have shown that the ROI can be a hun, one dollar, one dollar and fifty cent for every three dollars spent over a two-to-nine-year period. And definitely measuring ROI would be very important, a very important part of the process. To implement this strategy, it does require startup cost and ongoing operational cost. Utilization is very important, and we have already conducted an employee survey, and we got great participation in that survey and some very valuable information as we continue to move forward. We will be looking at employees' incentives in regards to utilizing the clinic. Well, I don't call it clinic, wellness center. Strategy two is to revamp our retiree benefits administration. The focus area, once again, is cost and options. This particular strategy, I must say, is very near and dear to my heart, and it is hypercritical that we get it right, because there's a lot that's riding on this particular strategy. What, in planned year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we spent over two-point-five million dollars on retiree benefits. And that cup, we have about five-hundred-and-twenty retirees on our plan. What we are proposing is a retiree stipend versus a monthly premium payment. This particular strategy will offer more options for the retiree, because currently the retiree only has two choices. That's either Aetna or the Kaiser Medicare products. The strategy does include a vendor-managed HRA. It can offer significant savings for the county and the retirees, but it's going to be critical to make sure that it is a win-win outcome. Just to give you an example of what that could look like, and I know this is maybe small for some of the others to take a look at, but if you look up there on the slide, you will see that a retiree, a normal retiree, under the Aetna Medicare Advantage, retiree who is Medicaid eligible spouse who is not, the current retiree contribution is three-hundred-and-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. The county contribution is seven-hundred-and-six dollars. The total premium is one-thousand-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. The retiree Medicare spouse, non-Medicare with the stipend, the retiree, the spouse will continue to receive benefits through Clayton County. The contribution for that is a hundred-and-ninety dollars and ninety-two cents. Clayton County's contribution would be four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Total premium reduced to six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. However, you can add in the stipend for the retiree, which is two-hundred dollars, takes that up to eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. That's just one model. Another model, if we were to give a stipend to both the spouse and the retiree, then that would be a monthly cost for the county of four-hundred dollars. The next strategy is an RFP for fully insured and self-funded products. It's important to tap the market periodically to see what is out there. Interestingly, insurance companies, what they do is they assign different standards and weights to their risk profile, and it is the risk profile that drives the setting of the premiums. By tapping the market and just seeing what is out there, it does allow us to explore more options. We will be looking for innovative, creative components of a plan, a very well-crafted RFP in process. We're looking for something cost- and quality-driven, service guarantees. Also, we want to over, just, just an overall plan review to make sure that we're getting the best quality at the best cost that we possibly can. Strategy four is to expand the current contract, medical contracts for six months. I said six months, but actually for seven months. Once again, the focus areas is cost and options. The Board approved for us to get the Medicare products on a calendar year, benefit year, from January first to December thirty-first. We're looking to do the same thing with the medical plans, so that the deductibles can run with the calendar year. This will allow us to explore our strategies without any disruptions. It's, another thing is, we have, the, the, let me see if I can articulate this. There are, within our Medicare products, there are blended premiums. Because you have, you have a retiree who may be Medicare eligible, the spouse may not be, or, or the reverse. However, we cannot engage retiree open enrollment until we get the rates correct, well, the rates approved for the active. In my opinion, that put us at a disadvantage, because that means that we have to get our renewal information earlier. And those renewals are based on different assumptions that have not even happened yet. Also, the earth, the importance of that strategy is to try to get the plan to align with a January one, begin another plan year. The next steps, and that is very small, I apologize. The retiree, we want to bring that strategy to the Board for your consideration, the second meeting in June. If the Board doesn't approve the strategy, what we will do is we will request to renew the Medicare products as they currently are. The Wellness Center, we're targeting the first meeting in August to bring this before the Board with an implementation date of December two thousand nineteen, which may be ambitious, or January two thousand twenty. If the Board doesn't approve that particular strategy, we will not stop. We will continue to look for innovative solutions. The RFP strategy, I will get with my team, and we'll work with Carol's Director Rogers and her team in regards to the RFP, so that we can lay out a proper timeline for that. In the last strategy, the extension of the contract period, we want to bring that back to the Board at the next meeting for your consideration with the actual cost. And finally, that's it.
Are there any questions for Ms. Ambles?
Yes, Ms. Ambles, thank you for this. I see you've all have been working diligently. I just have one quick question, so I can understand completely. So you're asking to, at some point, we'll have to extend the current contracts, so everybody's going to continue to pay the same premium up until open enrollment? So you are gauging that open enrollment would take place at the end of the year? If approved, as opposed to during it, doing it during the time of spring break, is that it?
Say that again for me, Commissioner.
Based upon what you shared with us, you're saying to extend everything that we have now.
Right.
So you're, we're not going to have open enrollment in March, is what you're proposing, March or April?
Exactly, that's right.
So you'll extend that out, because June one is our yearly start date normally. And so you'll extend that out six months, and that will put us into an open enrollment period of somewhere around October, November. And then you're going to open the clinic for, if approved, in December.
And, and let me, I'm going to make a statement, Commissioner. It appears that we're going to have to have two open enrollments, and my team, they, they understand that. I have already been informed by the consultants that there will be an increase in the premiums again this year, which has been the standard since I have been the HR Director, and the standards even before then. I told the consultants that this was not acceptable, that I would not bring that before the Board. If I had to bring it to, to you all, I wanted to... If I had to bring it to be, to you all, I wanted to make sure that the employees and that you all understand that we're looking at other strategies, uh, to make these benefits more robust as well as more cost effective for them. So it does appear we can extend the contract, but it, it appears that we're gonna have to extend it at that new rate. So we'll have to have open enrollment for that. And then we will have to turn around and have open enrollment again, as you said, around October-ish, or October, somewhere thereabout, for the new plan year to begin, January first. But I did, I'm gonna be honest with you and I, I thank you all for your support, uh, but I have never been so nervous up here because these are big, these are big strategies. And I know that my butt is on the line in making sure that we pull, I'm being serious. I have never been so nervous presenting to the board because this is, that they are ver- these are strategies that are very near and dear to me. I want the cl- the, the employees and the citizens to know that we are doing everything that we can and looking at things from a different perspective in order to have a more robust benefit, uh, plan. I feel that we have taken that function from an administrative function and turned it into a strategical function and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you for this information. I would like to talk through the timeline in a little bit more detailed offline to make sure we're not leaving any other options on the table so that the employees would not necessarily have to absorb that increase. Um, so we could talk about that offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Amplis?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you and good job.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Before I, uh, call out the first name, I do wanna acknowledge, uh, first of the year and it's always, uh, it's always a good thing to see our elected officials here and there's a lot of them here so I'm not gonna call names, but they're here from our school system as well as our court system and I see our mayor is here as well. So, let's give our elected officials a round of applause. And a special kudos goes out to our, uh, youth commissioners. They're doing a wonderful job and I understand that y'all also went to the inauguration of, uh, the governor this past, um,
Stand up.
The other day. Please stand up so y'all can get your little accolades too. Y'all are working hard and representing us well, so thank you. Darlene Johnson.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chair Commissioners. Darlene Johnson, Rex, Georgia. Uh, Commissioners, I would like to have an issue revisited that we went through last year. You guys did an, uh, awesome job extending it and getting the information out to the residents about the countywide tra- uh, trash refuge. A lot of people were opposed to it. I was absolutely for the countywide trash refuge. The reason that it failed was, uh, because of the way that, uh, it was attempted to build for it. Uh, and our Tax Commissioner, Baskins, he was not going to sign off on it so it was not a good deal to have that added as an item to our property tax. But this is an issue that is driving me crazy. I am so fed up with all the trash people. We can't control people that have no pride in where they live. Okay, but all of the dumping and all of the trash, I believe that we can address this issue and clean up, clean up the county in a particular way by having a countywide trash refuge and that every household has trash service, whether they are, uh, the owners, in-state, out-of-state, if it's investment form. Every property should have trash service and I would employ you guys to, let's work on, uh, a plan to implement that countywide trash refuge. We need it. It's, it's ridiculous to be in the county going home anywhere and you got mattresses and trash just strolled everywhere. It's, it's embarrassing, you know? I had someone come to my house the other day and was just appalled to see the trash out there that I didn't know had made it out there. But, um, I would like to, uh, have that, that issue revisited and then maybe we can come up with a way to have the billing done where it's not on a property tax, where it's not going to increase any property taxes, but we need to find a way to implement that process to help clean up our county. I mean, my Commissioner begs about it all the time. Please do not litter, please do not this and we all do. Everyone's fed up with it. So we really need to tackle that issue in particular. Thank you.
Uh, just so that you know, the solid waste, uh, board is, uh, looking at several options in which to mitigate that illegal dumping and, and littering. And we welcome you to even pay a visit to our, our meetings, but, uh, the one thing I wanna make sure that you know and citizens know that is when we look at these options, we wanna make sure that we incorporate the citizens' input.
Yeah.
So you should have a say-so in terms of what direction we go in as well. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. I do know Rob, Rob did tell me that they were looking at options.
Yes, yes. David O'Keefe.
Good evening, members of the board. David O'Keefe, uh, resident of Clayton County, Georgia. Have been a resident all my life, never left residency. Grew up in Rex, Georgia and, uh, moved to Riverdale briefly and then finally settled in Hampton. Um, I'm very proud of, uh, Clayton County's efforts to preserve the history and the landmarks of Clayton County. And in particular, I wanna bring attention to a landmark, uh, just north of Lovejoy, off of Terra Boulevard, known as the Sigma Chi Memorial Park maintained by the, uh, Clayton County Parks and Recreation. And, uh, sadly, the, uh, memorial cross there has been vandalized, uh, starting back in September, I believe. And gradually plaques have been stolen from that monument. And the, uh, incident was reported, I, I reported via email to Robert Petrie, the, uh, overseer, warden of the Constantine, Constantine Monument Site. And the, uh, Monument Memorials Commission of Sigma Chi, George L. Hopper and Michael Church, the Executive Director of Sigma Chi, based in Illinois. And, um, their intention is to repair the monument. But I believe that the vandalism could have been prevented if the park was properly lit because it, it's very dark up there at night, even though the park is closed at night, uh, anybody can go in there. Uh, but I would urge, you know, the board and work with the, uh, Parks and Recreation to get some lighting in there, uh, and possibly a camera to prevent further vandalism. And, um, that's basically it. Just urge the protection of our beautiful parks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just wanna really quick say, um, I'd already emailed you. Thank you for coming. That we're going to set up a meeting to discuss your concerns for.
Yes ma'am, I just wanna officially.
Just wanna acknowledge that.
Yeah, I wanna officially, uh, make it known.
Yes, sir, thank you.
May I give this to y'all?
Yes, nice to put a face with the email.
Yes, yes, it's good, good to meet you. And also it was a inspiring story about the, uh, Sigma Chi Mon- uh, Monument. If you take time to read it.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Roland Stevens. Right. Name is Roland Stevens, Clayton County, Georgia. Recent graduate of Clayton State University, class of twenty eighteen, graduated in May. I'm the founder of the Reformation of the Mind Movement. I'm also the owner of Black Online Encyclopedia of Philosophy and Education. Um, gonna keep this short, what I plan to say just escaped my mind so I'm just gonna speak from the heart. Pretty much, I believe that there is an idle philosophy regarding the edification of the people and of people in general regarding their, regarding their acquisition of wellness and structure and meaning in life. I believe that people are basing motivation on finding happiness. Happiness is an emotion and once happiness leaves, you're left with nothing. I believe that we should base our, I guess, edification on responsibility and meaning. Um, this movement, the platform of the Reformation of the Mind Movement, is predicated on self-knowledge, leadership, education and analytical mindset. This movement als- is also predicated, excuse me, on the edification of yourself and your fellow men. As leader of this movement, I'm formally asking Clayton County Government to assist me with the planning and the resources regarding any decisions or any community outreach programs to help get this movement going. I wish the whole, s- public speeches, wellness workshops, education workshops, uh, things to promote self-defense, to promote just general wellness of life and, yes, that is it.
Okay, let me, uh, introduce you to Ms. Seal, Ms. Deitch Stanford. Uh, provide him some information that way he can find out exactly what you're, you're asking for and how, if, how and if we can, uh, be of assistance.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tawon McKibben.
Hello, I'm Tawon McKibben from Jonesboro, Georgia. I'm here about the way there's barely any stores or grocery stores in Jonesboro, Georgia. We have to go mostly to, um, other cities to even get to a department store and we need more stores and at least one department store here in Jonesboro. And it's like we'd, um, even though there's an Aldi here in Jonesboro, when, um, the Publix closed and we have to go to other cities to get to more grocery stores and there need to be more grocery stores and at least one department store here in Jonesboro, Georgia.
Okay, duly noted, sir. We'll definitely pass that along and take note of it. Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. An eye for an eye, a tooth for a tooth. If we continue on that trajectory, we will all be blind and toothless. My love of God is only equaled by my love of my fellow man. With this as my introduction, let me come to the apex of my comment. It has been brought to my attention by my many mentors that I owe the Commissioner Hambrick and the other members of the Board of Commissioners. As a gentleman, an apology for the use of a word describing a female dog. However, I use that word as a verb, not as a noun. Not using this as an excuse, I humbly apologize to Commissioner Hambrick, the Board of Commissioners and my fellow Clayton Counties. I cannot expect you to do right if I don't do right. Thank you very much.
I apologize, can't pronounce the first name, but last name is Nougan, I believe. Mr. Nougan? Nougan? No. Huh?
That's Win, that's Win.
That's Win?
It's an Asian name, Win.
That's Win?
That is Win.
Right there.
San, San Win.
Yes.
San Win.
It is San Sheper Public Comment. Are they here for the, uh, public hearings? No, okay, pass, okay.
It's a zoning matter, Mr. Chair.
Now, what is this one?
He said it's a zoning.
Now, what is this one?
That's, um, Leslie Ice, Ice, I think that's his name.
Leslie, something, uh, Assyri? Leslie? Leslie? Okay. Vita Win?
It's okay.
Zoning too.
Yeah, you're here for the C P. Uh, Willie C. Stewart. Willie C. Stewart. Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a sucking? I'll suck in the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous?
The board will now consider the request of Attorney Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Good evening Chairman and, uh, Commission. I have, there's just one item on the, uh, agenda which is Ordinance twenty nineteen dash nine, which is an ordinance adopted under home rule power specifically granted to the governing authority of Clayton County pursuant to Article nine, section two, paragraph one, be one of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, amending the local act of the General Assembly creating and composing the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, setting forth the general provisions governing Clayton County Government to change the provisions governing meeting times to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes. This is the first reading. The effect of this ordinance is to increase the number of board meetings to be the first, second and third Tuesdays of the month, starting at six thirty.
For first, second and third?
Is that what you proposed?
Mm-mm. I thought it was first and third.
I thought it was the change, change the time.
Just the time.
I never said that.
Chuck, you, you got my heart papping-tating here.
Y'all looking at me? I didn't do this. You have attorneys that did that, sir.
The ordinance should be, to start the meetings at six thirty.
Okay, well, we'll need to amend the resolution that's here to have first and third Tuesdays at six thirty P M.
So we need to amend that?
That's correct.
And this is just for, uh,
This is the first.
Just the first recent actions required, so.
There will need to be a vote. There'll need to be a vote on this because you have to ratify it twice in order for it to pass.
Okay, so you need to vote both times?
That's correct.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the reading of the ordinance to include?
We have to amend it first.
That's correct.
So I make a motion that we amend the ordinance to where it reads that it's just the first and third Tuesday to begin at six thirty and the time is six thirty P M.
All right, I'll suck in that motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous? Now we'll take a motion on the passage of that amended motion. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a sucking? I'll properly move and suck in, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous?
Uh, Chairman, we would need a executive session on litigation and person- and personnel.
Litigation personnel, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
All right, the first, uh, board appointment is to the Board of Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Demont Davis. Uh, the term expires on September second, twenty twenty, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations? Okay, hearing none, I'll hold, we'll hold till next meeting. Second appointment is to the Board of Elections and Registration to fill the unexpired term of Roof Ash. The term expires on December 31st, 2020. My selection, I would like to recommend Darlene Johnson, is there a sucking?
A second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Board of Ethics to fill the expiring term of, or, 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 or Lithia?
Aretha.
Aretha, I'm sorry, Ms. Aretha.
Aretha Enzley.
Enzley, the term is one year expiring on February 2nd, 2019, Commissioner, it says Commissioner Davis's appointment.
Move to reappoint Ms. Aretha Enzley.
Is there a sucking?
A second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Library Board to fill the expiring term of Dietra Pointexter. Term is three years, expiring on February 1st, 2022. For board appointment, are there any recommendations?
I make a, I make a recommendation we reappoint Ms. Dietra Pointexter.
Is there a sucking? I'll suck in the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, martyr to fill the expired term of Roberta Abdul Salam. The term is four years, expiring on December 31st, 2022, for board appointment, are there any recommendations?
I make a recommendation, once again, that we reappoint Ms. Roberta Abdul Salam.
I'll suck in the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Last appointment is to the Veterans Advisory Board, fill the unexpired term of E.J. Chows. The term expires on June 6th, 2022. It is my appointment, and I might ask that we hold that till the next meeting. With that being said, that was the last appointment, Madam Clerk, we'll move on next to the zoning.
Right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next few items are zoning public hearings. The first zoning public hearing, the applicant is Veda O. Nguyen on behalf of Charles Weatherby, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow an auto mechanic shop within an existing facility previously occupied by a plumbing contractor. The subject property is located at 2394 Rex Road in Ellinwood, Georgia, 30294. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with conditions. This is District 1, Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory's district.
Did we hear, we heard him the last time, so Jack, do we have to hear it again?
Have another public.
Because he held it over, we held it.
We don't have to.
No, we did not have a public hearing, we advertised, immediately went and advertised before this meeting.
Okay, so we didn't hear, I'm sorry.
All right, sir, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Veda Nguyen, I live in 113 Crown Chase Drive in Stockbridge, Georgia. I have a shop now that is located in Forest Park on Forest Parkway. Retired from the military in 2012, I opened my shop in November 2011, and so I've been there now seven years. Since I've been there, I've outgrown the shop that I have now. And I've been looking for buildings, and it's been pretty, pretty hard to find another place to move my shop, because now we having a lot of a lot of challenges with automotive shop. And I understand why, because the way a lot of the people leave, they, the outside, leave cars abandoned and things like that. Well, I'm not like that, I like to keep my, my place, my shop clean. I am, you know, my shop, even when people go in there now and they say it's clean, but I think it's dirty. So, but I got this, I found this shop that's on 2394 Rex Road. It's big enough for me to grow to where I want to, to what I want to grow to, and I'm looking forward to working in, in Ellinwood, if the Commission will allow me to do that.
Okay, sir, so is there anyone here to speak for or against the applicant's request? Anybody here to speak for or against his request? All right, hearing none, Commissioner Gregor.
Ms. Spann, were there, did ZAG set forth any conditions or stipulations for Mr. Nguyen?
Yes, yes, ZAG and the planning staff had consistent conditions, and those conditions were three items. The requirement is, is for the applicant to maintain a forty-foot buffer along the rear and the west where it joins residential properties. It'll all work done in the garage, be interior to the garage bays, and that no storage of junk vehicles on the exterior portion of the property be maintained. They must also provide a hundred percent screening, a fence screening along the rear and sides adjacent to the residential.
Okay, and Mr. Nguyen and I met out at the property, and he, he also agreed, Mr. Garber, to make sure that the trash is picked up along Rex Road. And I know we can't make him do that, and he's very well aware that there's a high school just across from this shop, but he is willing to do that. And he's also agreed, he wants to do some mild landscaping, and he is willing to abide by all of these conditions by ZAG to make sure everything is in the back, no storage of cars at the front, no working on cars in the front and so forth. So with that, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation that we accept this petition from Mr. Nguyen.
Is there a sucking?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
The next zoning public hearing, the applicant is Marie Anne Duhar, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow a special event facility within an existing shopping plaza. The subject property is located at 5442 Frontage Road, Suite Number 140 in Forest Park, Georgia, 30297. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with conditions. This is District 2, Commissioner Gail Hambrick's district.
Ms. Sandra Hart.
Good evening. I'm Marie Anne Duhar, my company is Le Fai Do Do, and I'm here for the conditional use permit.
Did she speak to us last time?
Yes.
Did we have a public hearing on that?
Not about this, she just spoke for public comment.
Okay, that is correct. So tell us something about what you're doing. Tell us what you're doing.
No problem, I have an event facility in Atlanta called Le Fai Do Do. We host all sorts of occasions, from weddings to sporting events. We met with the Rams this morning for the Super Bowl, not saying they're going to go. They gotta beat the Saints first. And we would love to bring it to this 5442 Frontage Road, it's an ideal property for us, it's great access. It will, as we spoke about before, not have any impact as far as residential is concerned, and we've looked high and low from Gwinnett down actually even below here, and it's, it's the, it's the one we want. We'd really like to have it, we'd like to be here in Clayton County.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak for or against this request? Anybody to speak for or against it? Commissioner.
Yes, Ms. Spann, will you give us the conditions, I believe they had conditions?
Yes, there are conditions. The, the staff recommended that the property be approved for a special events facility, and that they meet all the requirements that were outlined in the text amendment that sets standards for how a special events facility should be operated under Article 6. Staff and ZAG both recommended approval based on that's one condition.
Okay, well, I know we've been back and forth for a while with this, and I would like to say I welcome this facility or this event area. And like you say, it's not in the neighborhood or anything, and it's right off 75, which is good.
It's perfect.
Okay, so I would recommend approval.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one thing? Will you advertise your Atlanta location, can you advertise the Clayton County location simultaneously in all the magazines? That would be great.
You said, "will I"?
Can you, please?
Actually, we're getting ready to be, this is going to be our main location, so.
All right.
Yeah, if we're going to be advertising everything right here in this location, for sure, definitely. In fact, we drove those Rams folks down over here already to take and see it this morning, so. They gotta win first, they are playing the Saints, sorry, but you know, we're Le Fai Do Do, we are from Louisiana.
The next zoning public hearing, the applicant is Eric Robinson, and the request is for a rezoning from Urban Village District to a planned unit development for a residential subdivision. The subject property is located on Walt Stevens Road within the Spy Club subdivision. The planning and zoning staff is recommending denial, and ZAG is recommending approval with conditions. This is District 4, Commissioner Demont Davis's district.
I've spoken with Mr. Robinson today, and he chooses to table this matter.
Jack, does he need to be here to have voiced that or send us a letter or something to the clerk?
Would you prefer that you do that? You, if you want to take some action, you could go forward, but you also could table it until you get a letter to give him that opportunity.
To send, to send, to notify contact us. Your pleasure.
So we'll go ahead and table it until we receive a letter.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll suck in the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next zoning public hearing, the applicant is Joan Nguyen on behalf of Mr. Nguyen, and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a place of worship within an existing single-family structure. The subject property is located at 2716 Mount Zion Road Boulevard in Jonesboro, Georgia, 30236. The planning and zoning staff and ZAG recommend approval with conditions. This is District 1, Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory's district.
Yes, sir, please state your name and tell us what you want to do.
Good evening, my name is Son Lam, I live in McDonald, Georgia. I will translate for Mr. Sun Nguyen, he a master, he just a monk. He bought the properties, and he want to be, you know, turn to the permit for the temple. However, we have to have like five acre lot, but he got only 3.1, so he, you know, we asked for, and after that, he realized that we cannot do it, so I said, "Look, I come here to have and translate and just operate by himself", because he stated by only himself. So we don't want him to violate it, so we just got a permit occupied, so make sure he just get a small, you know, temple worship by himself, that's it.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak for or against this request? Anybody would like to speak for or against? Commissioner Gregor.
Ms. Spann, I may ask you again, does this place of worship fall within the guidelines of our zoning requirements that are specified for place of worship?
Yes, yes, it does, this property happens to be zoned office institutional, so it's not, it does not require the acreage requirement that you would normally have if it was in residential zoning district. These planning staff and both ZAG recommended approval with conditions. The two conditions are that the property be limited to a place of worship in the existing structure with no additions, and that the, that the property involves, you can see two parcels, that these two parcels be combined into one parcel prior to receiving a C.O. to operate the place of worship. Those are the only two conditions.
Thank you, and with that, I will go with the zoning advisory group's recommendation to approve this petition.
Is there a sucking?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The last zoning public hearing, the applicant is Mark Whitley on behalf of Whitley Engineering, and the request is for a rezoning from General Business District to Light Industrial District for the development of a commercial parking lot. The subject property is located at 5147 Highway 42 in Ellinwood, Georgia, 30294. This is District 1, Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory's district.
Is it okay to give these out, sir? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mark Whitley with Whitley Engineering, 38 East Main Street North, Hampton, Georgia. Requesting the rezon 6.79 acres from GB to Light Industrial for truck parking lot. Property is located on Highway 42 north of Forest Parkway. We are proposing 160 parking spaces with a perimeter chain link fence, plus a six-foot-high decorative gate at the entrance, the entrance is actually about 150 feet off the roadway, ten-foot sidewalk along the frontage, and also a 10-foot landscape strip along the frontage. And we do have a smaller area in the northeast part of the property where there is a daycare center, and we are proposing a buffer along that. And I'm also going to discuss this drawing we just gave you on that in just a minute. The property is consistent with the adjacent zones, it's light industrial on three sides except for the very northeast part, which is the daycare center, which is GB. Across the road is heavy industrial zoning, and it would be consistent with the future land use, which is the MXI mixed-use commercial. We are also requesting relief on a few items, one would be the separate site access. We're proposing just have the one entrance, the property, this type of business is not open to the public, so we don't have people coming in and out, the cars that are coming in or drivers are actually parking same spaces as they would be parking truck. Also, interior landscaped island on this type of facility probably wouldn't really be feasible, we would prefer to just spend more money and do more landscaping up front, which would be visible from Highway 42. And then also, there's a requirement for a multi-use path and a pedestrian lighting along the frontage. We don't have a whole lot of frontage there, there's no, there's no existing path or lighting anywhere in that area that we'd be connected to, so we also request relief in that. I would like to bring up in the meeting that we, that we recently had, where we received denial, the, one of the concerns, Mr. Fountain, who owns the daycare center was there, and he was actually kind of supportive of the project, even though he'd have a few concerns about some things. So, in the, in the past week, we were able to meet with actually Ms. Fountain, who's also owner of the daycare, and went over a few of the issues with her. And that drawing that you've got has actually changed a little bit from the original zone, original drawing, that's why I wanted to give that to you. And I know it may be hard to notice on this, but you may see some heavy trees, and then you, up on the north end, excuse me, northeast end of our drawing, where we actually increased the buffer to 25 feet next to the daycare center. We showed some Leland Cypress there. We're also proposing the security fence to be screened in that area. And then we also relocated the front part of the property where we put the actual office building and the vehicle parking to the south side, and then we opened up an area and left an area vacant next to the daycare center, mainly for the reason that Ms. Fountain said they actually used the existing driveway to that house to turn around their buses. So we moved the design away from there where we could leave that driveway in place where they could still utilize those drives. I'm not sure if they're here tonight, I hope they'll, they'll speak after I finish, but Ms. Fountain indicated that they would be supportive of this project if we do those items. And I believe that's all I got, and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Would the parking lot be paid?
Yes.
Paid parking lot? I did talk to Dr. Fountain also, who has the daycare, and she did let me know, she has no problem, she let me know she worked out some concerns she had that would actually help her daycare, you know, to separate. Now, I still want the landscaping, even though it's a, you know, truck parking lot, the landscaping is important, and this is on Highway 42, kind of cross over in the area. I like, I like the lighting, simply because, you know, of, you know, cut down on the possibility of theft when people leave their trucks there and so forth. And this also, one of the problems that I'm having now is people parking on right-ofways, on the, parking their tractor trailers on the right-ofway, so I do believe this is a good thing for right now, so that people can have that availability. Ms. Spann, were there any?
Hold on, before we get to that, Commissioner. Hold on, before we get to that, uh, Commissioner, let me ask if there's anybody here who wanna speak for or against this applicant's request? Anybody like to speak for or against, come, come forward, please. Uh, Ms. Johnson, I'll get you second.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Shrona Fountain, and I'm the owner of the learning station that's next to this project. I did get a chance to talk with both of the individuals, and I'm okay with them with this project, provided that they stay true to the conditions and making sure that our kids are safe. Um, that was the main thing, is just giving us a little bit more buffer room, so we make sure that our kids are not impacted. Um, on the other side of them, you have SDs, and on the other side of me, I have a forklift place. So I understand the industrial area, so I don't have a problem with that. It's just providing that we maintain safety and make sure that we both can be able to fulfill our vision as far as our, you know, jobs and making sure everything is, you know, good for the Ellwood area.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Johnson. Please, speaking of Mike, please.
Darlene Johnson again. Where exactly is it on Highway forty-two?
At the, um, close to the intersection of Forest Parkway and Highway forty-two north.
Okay, so it's not right on us, 'cause you know I'm on Highway forty-two.
According to this map here, it looks like it's next to the arm, where the Orbach Thorf armory is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that that is industrial area. I just wanted to see how close it was to me.
Yeah, and you're one of those who have contacted my office about the tractor trailers going around the area.
Absolutely.
So I think to the Commissioner Gregory's point, uh, we get calls all the time about tractor trailers parking on the right-ofway. So I think this would be a big plus for that area.
So it's a parking lot for them?
Yes, for, for tractor trailers.
Excellent, because we are having that, that issue.
Yes. Anybody else like, like to speak for or against, come forward, ma'am.
Sonia Delbridge, Ellwood. I have a question. What about the environmental for the children with the fumes from the trucks? Will they be running all the time?
No, I wouldn't think so, uh, where is, uh, the applicant? It's like overnight parking, right?
Yeah, but a lot of them run continuously, they're sleeping. So I don't know if the fumes are gonna be, the kids are gonna be...
Like a, like a, like a way, a layover or so. A lot of what I see now, especially with the Kroger parking, I mean, the Kroger, Kroger Distribution Center, because they have a specific time that they have to pull into that center, they'll pull over on the side of the road and wait until that time comes before they go to the, uh, Distribution Center to deliver their load. So this would give them opportunity to go and park there and park off the roadway, and then wait to that time to come, in addition to whatever else. But that, that's the major problem that I, that's been coming in my office, uh, when people are telling me that they're waiting on side of the road to be able to go into the, uh, Gillum enclave, so...
Mr. Chair, can we, oh, sorry. Can we legally, um, require that they cannot have trucks idling there? 'Cause there are some facilities that do allow for the truck drivers to sleep, as you mentioned. 'Cause I have family members that drive trucks, and it is like a house on wheels. And they will idle their trucks there while they're waiting until that time and catch a nap. Which we want them rested, but I do understand your concern. So maybe there's an opportunity, we can have that conversation, even if we can't do it legally. Maybe there's something you would be amenable to, it was just an idea, Commissioner.
And those kids, are you talking about the kids that's gonna be at the daycare?
Yes.
Because usually, uh...
It's day or night, that they, they only gonna come at night, they're not coming during the day.
Well, usually if they come during the day, they're waiting to drop the load.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, we'll, we'll stay on top of that. Guys, it's a valid concern, so thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Hamrick.
What's, what's it? Yeah, how will you get the word?
Come forward, sir.
Yeah. No, I just wanna know, how will you get the word?
No, hold on a second, hold on a second. Yes, sir, take the mic, hold on.
I just wanna know, how will you get the word out about your parking space, because, parking lot, rather? Because we have quite a bit of that, I'm having to call the police from time to time. In our area, and we live across town. So how will people know, these truckers know, that they can park there overnight?
That, you know, would you, the owners are here also, they might be able to help patch over.
If you'd like to come forward.
I just want the word to get out over in District Two.
Sure.
Maybe y'all need to put one in District Two.
They've already got some facilities in that area, so obviously, those areas, those lots must be overflowing, so they need to expand, but...
Take the mic so we can hear you.
Maybe you all have social media or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess how do you advertise, how do you get the word out to people, 'cause they know you're there?
State your name for us, sir.
Uh, good evening, um, my name is Fatwin, I'm the, uh, owner of that property. Actually, that's, that's one just, uh, just, we can use for the truck and trailer parking or just trailer storage.
No, the only thing, let me just say this, what we're asking as a board here is that you make sure that you, uh, put the word out, that your parking lot exists, so that other, so that trucks can come utilize your parking, simply. If it's as simple as going to like the, the Kroger dis- Distribution Center to drop off flyers saying that there's parking now avail- available, uh, within our sign ordinance, putting out a sign that says, you know, the parking is there. So just, we just wanna make sure that you make it known that your parking area exists for their utilization.
Yes, we are, we put on the, the, uh, advertisement, uh, look net and, uh...
For police, yeah.
I got a feeling that they're gonna find a way.
Yeah, and you have to sign a yard also.
When the police pull them over and when they're on side of the road, they'll direct them that way, so... Thank you, sir, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Come forward.
Here's where the rubber beats the road. One thing I'd like to...
State your name, sir, you know the drill.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Highway forty-two, to be exact. Three things you need to ask yourself and need to question. One, is there gonna be bathroom facilities for these people coming in there parking their truck? That's one question. Another question is refuse, garbage. A tractor trailer, whether it be a flatbed or van body, has gravel in it, garbage on it, pallets on it that have to be disposed of. And these things have to be addressed. Yes, I am for a parking facility, but these, not every truck driver's created equal. And some of them'll dump their trash and sweep their trailers off anywhere and take a dump anywhere. Thank you very much, that's all I gotta say.
That does, uh, prompt me to ask one additional question. Yeah, it's a parking facility, but is there, is there, is this gonna be a gated entrance with a, uh, attendant?
It does have a gated entrance, it's about a hundred and fifty feet off the road to allow at least two trucks to get off the road. It's a decorative entrance, we do have a lot of landscape, we will, we will love the pedestrian lighting and landscaping as you requested. And, um...
Now what about if it's...
There is an office building just inside the gate.
So somebody will be on property?
There will be a gate, office area, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Come forward, ma'am.
The amount of trucking companies that we have coming into the county, because we're designated for logistics, period. You look at Airtropolis, we are logistics on that side of town. Are we doing these RFPs, are we asking for an additional one percent tax from these companies to, to be able to maintain our roads? Because they are going to constantly tear them up. And rather than me as a taxpayer take on that burden, I think when we allow these companies to come into the county, that we get that additional at least one percent tax from them to cover the repairs of the roads.
Well, this is privately owned property, we didn't put out RFP for it, but, uh, that's something that we do need to start taking note of.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for the, for that.
Thank you, we absolutely need to get that additional tax dollar.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? All right, uh, who is this, Commissioner Gregor?
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, again, Mr. Whitley, we're asking you to keep the landscape, and I wanna keep that option in. Um, also, keep the lighting in, that will help the police more against theft. And with that, um, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also like to, um, say happy Founder's Day to, um, the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We have you here.
That's big of you, Commissioner, that's big of you. It hurt a little bit, it hurt a little bit to do that, didn't it? All right, if there's no other business before this, uh, board, then we will, I will ask for a motion going into executive session for litigation and personnel, is there a second?
So moved.
Uh, second to motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose, it's unanimous. Everybody have a good night, have a good evening. All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Uh, second to motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Wait, uh, Mr. Chair, I thought you were gonna, we're gonna vote on that?
Oh, yes, thank you for that, you, you on it, boy, you've been on the last couple...
Who is Dr. King? Martin Luther?
Well, yeah, there's more than one Dr. King around here.
Birthday.
All right. Uh, I would like to make a motion to hire Ms. Brenda James as the next clerk of court for the BOC. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Happy birthday, Martin Luther King Junior. Everybody celebrate, have a good time. What did I say?
Doctor Reverend.
Martin Luther King Junior.
Doctor Martin Luther King Junior. Anybody got anything else? Hearing none. Now, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor?
Aye.
God bless you.
Ms. Courtney's the one that told me to make sure you hire that clerk.
Oh, I'm gonna beg you.